Olivia Clark, thanks so much for coming into the shed today. Really appreciate you coming here, especially just yesterday. You were down at the swearing in ceremony. So I know this is an interesting time in your life, but it's great to have you here.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here.
Just to help people get acquainted a little bit with, with you. Can you share like your relationship to getting around throughout your life in terms of, did you ride a bike as a kid, take a bus to school, anything like that?
Yeah, well, starting from the very beginning, I grew up in my father's diner and we lived right behind the diner.
Easy commute.
It was easy commute and I walked to school pretty much my entire school life. Until I got to junior high school and I had to be bused. So I was always living near my school, which was such, I realize now such a privilege to be able to do that, to even go home for lunch if you had to, or if there was an emergency. But yeah, when I think about that, and then when I went to college, I lived on campus. So, and I didn't have a car until I graduated from college. And although I drove a college bus when kids needed to get to the airport or something like that to make extra money. But when I came, when I moved to Oregon to go to graduate school at the University of Oregon, I was a bike commuter and I had an old Raleigh three speed that I rode everywhere. And I wish I still had that bike, actually. I gave it to a friend who lives out in Sandy. But yeah, that's my early history with transportation. And then when I was a kid in the Bay area, my mother didn't drive. So we took the bus if we needed to go somewhere. And we took the bus downtown or wherever it was in the Bay area. And I just remember my mother always making us give up our seat, you know, to somebody elderly and just pounding that into my brain. But yeah, so I'm thinking about, I did, I did ride the bus as a kid because my mother didn't drive. And then let's see, when I moved to Salem, I did have a car, but it was really funky. You know, it was a really, it was a European car that nobody can find the parts for. And I actually had to deal with a carburetor myself. I changed my own tires and finally just gave up on it, you know, and I didn't have a car and.
And you moved to Salem because you were working in the governor's office?
Well, before, no, I moved there before that and I actually worked for the city of Salem. I worked for three different mayors at the city of Salem as the city's liaison to the legislature and worked on issues around, well, obviously transportation is always a big issue for local government. The 50, 30, 20 split, you know, that's a, that's like, you know, religion.
That's the highway, the state highway funding formula, 50% goes to ODOT, 30% goes to counties, 20% goes to cities. A little bit of talk in this upcoming session about maybe changing that.
I know.
We can get into that. So I didn't realize that you actually lived in Salem and worked for mayors as a legislator.
I lived, and actually I lived within walking distance of city hall. So didn't have to worry about transportation. Yeah, I worked for three mayors and that's, before that it was a housing advocate. And I did travel all over the state to work on affordable housing issues and lobby those issues at the state legislature before I went to work for the city of Salem.
Yeah, you founded a nonprofit called CASA.
Yes, I did. And actually before that I worked on a nonprofit that was the Oregon Rural Housing Coalition and lobbied on housing issues. At that point in history, our housing agency was very limited. It only did housing finance and I introduced legislation to create community development corporations, to create a pre-development loan fund, all kinds of things to facilitate the development of affordable housing. And in the course of that, learned a lot about farm worker housing or lack of around the state and joined up with two other people to co-found CASA to build farm worker housing around the state. In fact, Barbara Roberts was the Secretary of State in those days and she let me drive her car and take her to see farm worker housing conditions because we found some money, really old money inside the Secretary of State's office that was from the old, like USDA from the depression era. And it was not a huge amount of money, but it was being used for, it was scholarships for the sons and daughters of the cattlemen's association. And I was able to convince the land board, starting with Barbara Roberts, Secretary of State, to dedicate that to the construction of farm worker housing. And I actually had a farmer who was willing to take a risk and, and apply for that money.
Wow, that must've been an interesting conversation. The cattlemen's, Sons and Daughters of Cattlemen's Association going into farm workers housing. So I know you've done Cycle Oregon, I have to mention, that's an interesting thing. People may not realize, but the whole mission of Cycle Oregon, at least they've changed their mission recently. But really, when it was starting, it was about rural Oregon and connecting urban, people love cycling and, you know, in the cities and getting out to rural Oregon and making that, that divide a little bit less.
Bringing people, bringing money, making investments in some of those small towns where we would stop and camp and.
And so you've done Cycle Oregon?
Yes.
There you go. That's, that's a part of your.
Cycle Oregon and I've done the weekends and actually I've done a lot of big rides across the country too.
Oh, really?
I did the Katy Trail in Missouri. I did the Nicholson Trail in one of the Dakotas. I can't remember which Dakota it is. I've rented bikes in Tucson. They have a really fantastic bike infrastructure in Arizona, in Tucson, anyway.
Are you more of a credit card bike touring person? Or do you load everything on your bike? Like what's, what's the style of riding you're doing?
Well, when I, I rode a couple of rides with adventure cycling and I have to admit, I, I wanted to stay in a hotel or motel and I did that. I would admit, I don't, I didn't have a pen, a, pennies. I didn't do that. I'm, I wanted a mattress.
Well, that's what adventure cycling is for. That's good. That's great. So you just were at the swearing in ceremony yesterday, coming into city council. And what was that experience like for you? What was it like being up on stage with those 12 other members of council?
Well, it was a moment, you know, I mean, we're at a pivotal time in our history. So it was a historic moment and it was so great to hear my fellow counselors with the 90 seconds to two minutes that they were allotted to make a statement about their, their running, why they're there. And it was really terrific to hear them, even though I've started to get to know some of them. It was fun to hear what they had to say. I did something completely different though. I didn't talk about myself or why I ran. I just asked the audience to close their eyes and to send us their best wishes or maybe a blessing that we would have the strength and the courage and the humility to, to do what's needed at this time.
And besides the fact that you've, you've worked for government, you've worked for an agency, you worked for Trimest for a long time, which is an agency that has a lot of close interaction and work with government. You haven't held the government office yourself, right? So you do need some strength going forward. This is a new experience for you and you're going right into the, into the fire of Portland.
Exactly. I've had a lot of experience with policy and clearly working with Governor Kit Sabre. I learned an awful lot about it and actually worked a lot with him on trying to form a greater partnership between local and state government. And that's where we came up with the concept of the Community Solutions Team, which eventually became Oregon Solutions as a way of solving problems and bringing everybody to the table. So I'm happy I had that experience coming into city hall.
Yeah, Oregon Solutions. For folks that don't know Gateway Green, the really popular bike park over where the I-84 and I-205 meet, that was an Oregon Solutions project, 2009, that was, that was deemed Oregon Solutions.
In there.
Have you?
Yeah, took my stepson, grandson, we rode all over.
Oh, you went to Gateway Green. Oh, great. Yeah. Yeah. Well, there you go. So that, and that's where the government brings different parties together. And another thing that you were saying about your time in the governor's office, which was two administrations, three? Two? You were there for?
I was there for almost eight years, the first two terms, his first two terms.
And I remember you said something in a podcast I heard where it was kind of like a familial atmosphere. People stayed, stuck around their, their roles for year upon year. And it just started making me think about this upcoming council where we're going to have 12 people, 13 if you count the mayor, you know, and we just had that election. And I just wonder, especially coming off the two, you had a two week, so I don't know, summer, I don't know what a swearing in camp. What did you guys call it? Yeah. A two week thing with the new council members? What was that like? Was, did you, was there any similarities there? Are you starting to feel that esprit de corps? Is there any camaraderie? What are, what are your feelings about that?
You know, we all hadn't met each other. I mean, there were people who ran that I had never met before.
You probably spent a lot of time with certain people in your district or whatever, but right.
And there were other events that different interest groups would have and we might, you know, mingle some, but there were people I had never met. So it's been great to get to know everybody and I feel so good about who got elected. It's been a great experience. However, I have to say that the city, the transition team coming into this had really programmed us pretty tightly so that we didn't have a lot of time built in to really talk to each other. And finally we put our foot down and said, hey, we can do some of this later. Right now we need to really get to know each other to start talking about what our norms will be, what the committees will be, and then carving out time to figure out how we're going to comport ourselves. So I think we're, we all like each other for the most part, I think. There's no outliers. There's an interesting age range and experience. There's a lot of people with good experience, you know, bringing lots of good experience with them. So I'm optimistic.
Yeah, the age thing is interesting. I saw something in an analysis from Rose City Reform that it's the, the first time there's like a majority of millennials or Gen Z, Gen Z on council or something like that.
One of the, one of those.
Quite a mix, but also, also a mix of political perspectives to some degree. There's someone in your district, Mitch Green, who's endorsed and fully embraced, you know, Democratic Socialists of America. You've been described as a moderate in the local press.
I'm not sure what that means.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, do you think that fits?
Well, I guess if you, if you look at all of us across the board and our endorsements, I'm somewhere in the middle. I mean, I'm a crossover candidate, you know, people endorse me from the left and the right. Not the far left, but the labor community, the business community. So there are several of us that were crossover candidates, I think. And maybe that is what colors the sense of moderation.
One last question, just generally about council. You've been named as sort of a, a frontrunner, maybe for the council president position. And I'm just curious, do you want that position? Is that something you're looking forward to? And what's the state of the race that you know about at this point?
Yes, I think from the very beginning, I was the person who came out initially and, and admitted that I did want that position. Whether it was in the Lamont Week or wherever, I, I think others kind of held back and then finally stepped forward. Candace Avalos and now more recently, Ilana has stepped forward as a potential compromise.
And I heard you say about a year or so ago, that if you did have a slogan for your campaign, it would be, let's just fix it. So I'm curious if you could tell me, as someone who wants to be council president, I'm assuming, and one, the first person that really stepped forward and said they wanted that job, I'm assuming you have some ideas on what it's going to take to fix it and what, and sort of what was broken. So what's the remedy to Portland's?
Well, I think first of all, Jonathan, it really starts with our attitude. And the form of government is going to make a huge difference too, in terms of fixing it. But I think we need to, you know, reevaluate that slogan we once had that we're the city that works because we really haven't been working. I think we're, we've been in our own way. You know, whether it's the development of affordable housing or jobs, whatever it is, we, we've started to get kind of negative. We've been the city of no. I think we need to be the city of yes again. And, and the other thing too, I would mention is that we, we've got lots of plans. You know, we have a plan for everything or we have a policy statement about everything. But what we don't have are metrics and outcomes. We don't measure results and that's something that we need to pursue to a greater degree.
Yeah, I want to get into some of that in a second here. You mentioned housing, you have experience as a housing advocate and dealing with housing policy. You have a lot of experience in government, you have a lot of experience with transportation. I just wonder, do you think Portland could do a better job of connecting housing and transportation in terms of a policy approach? And what is, what do you think we could do with those two things wedded more closely together?
Well, especially on the issue of affordability in transportation. I will just go backwards in time a little bit. When we, Trimest built the yellow line to the, the.
Expo Center?
Expo Center, convention center, Expo Center. And it was all very exciting that this whole area was going to redevelop. And there was going to be a lot of housing along the line. But what we didn't do was ensure that that housing was going to be affordable. So I think we actually, we're a part of the problem in terms of gentrification. And that's something we need to be a lot more sensitive about when we put in, you know, the new, the new BRT on 82nd or if we ever get around to building the Southwest Light Rail Line to Tigard. Those are things that we can do a much better job on is ensuring affordability when it's linked to a transportation corridor.
Yeah, that's a, that's a big issue. I know there are actual advocates out there who have come to just oppose transit oriented development on its face because they say without making service better and, and outlying areas, that's not fair. And it's also just gentrifying and it's not putting money into actually helping people that live maybe not just right immediately next to transit, but four or five miles away who still don't have great transit service. Can you say anything about that balance between, I mean, I know you've worked at Trimest, but it's also like a real city neighborhood issue of the balance between new projects, spending money on capital projects and development around those projects versus service improvements that expand transit to more people?
Got to find the balance. Yeah. I don't know what that balance is exactly. And we also just need to make it easier to build affordable housing. But I think we need more resources, you know, I'm, I'm a person who, I was brought in to Trimest with a kamikaze mission. You know, and my mission was to, to really find the resources to build out the light rail system and the telecom bridge, which I did. But that work doesn't stop. We still need more resources, which is why the 2025 state legislative session is going to be so important when it comes to transportation. But I think we need to find the balance. And because of our, the changes post pandemic in the, in our work and the, where we work and how we work, we need to do some reevaluating about transit as well because people are not all necessarily right now coming into the core of the city and we built a radial system. And we've had a lot of debate over the years about, you know, north, south lines that don't come into town or on the far east side as well. And those are all issues that we need to wrestle with.
And sort of related is the fact that, you know, the, some of the people that are making decisions about those, should we have balance or not, or what, where the line should be, or how that balance materializes out in the community. The board is appointed by, the Trimest board is appointed right now by the governor. Now, and Metro in their charter says that they could actually govern Trimest completely as an agency. I don't know if that is a proposal people really would be willing to get behind. But do you, do you think there's something we need to do differently about Trimest governance? So we can maybe get better outcomes or get a different perspective on those balance issues and service issues? Because right now the governor appoints someone to the, appoints the Trimest board. And there's not a lot of, let's say, you know, pointed thought from the board a lot of times in terms of holding Trimest accountable. I feel, I feel like it's a real, doesn't really have a lot of clout. And I think that might be one of the reasons why. I'm just curious if you have any thoughts about changing that governance structure? Maybe a compromise where Metro appoints the board, but it's still an independent agency?
I think it needs to maintain its independence. I really do. And I think that's part of its success in working regionally. And I think the appointments over time have become more equitable, actually. You're getting more representation from different kinds of folks being appointed. So I, I wouldn't suggest any changes at this point.
And you mentioned before about the 2025 session and transportation revenue. And I know you have a history of bringing in revenue for big transportation projects. Even when there was a Republican majority in the early 2000s, you know, the first payroll tax, right? Now there's a Democratic super majority down in the state, but we still have that issue of needing new revenue. And I wonder, have you put any thought toward, you know, let's even just consider locally focusing back on Portland. How do you think, like in transportation terms, what do you think is a good avenue to look at for new revenue, new funding?
Wow. That is the question of the day, isn't it? Where are we going to find more money? Because we're not getting it, we're not getting what we need from the gas tax any longer. So we need to be creative about other options, whether it's, you know, taking the utility route or some other route. I don't have the silver bullet. It might be silver buckshot. We may need to have little bits of money from lots of different places. But I can tell you one thing, I will fight to the death to keep the 50, 30, 20 rule going. I don't want to see local government on the losing end of what other, whatever transportation package comes out of Salem.
And you mentioned the utility fee. That's the fee that used to go a lot to transportation whenever a utility has to mess with a pole or do anything in the right of way. But that's been carved away from transportation. It's one of the reasons why P-Bot is struggling. That's been, they have very little money as it is in terms of what's dedicated, what's not. But a lot of that utility fee money is gone.
Well, I think that we have to be very careful in this upcoming legislation, legislature that we prohibit or prevent any kind of preemption, what you're talking about preempting, tying our hands and how we can raise revenue at the local level. This has been an issue for me from the very beginning, when I worked for local government and I worked for Governor Kit Sabre. When we had our big kumbaya moment with local government, we came up with principles of partnership. And one of those things was that the governor agreed not to preempt local government's ability to raise revenue. We have to watch out for that.
On that note, this is just kind of a bonus question I just thought about. But the, I'm sure you're aware, there's a constitutional restriction on use of the state highway fund.
Oh, yes.
Right, obviously. You're very real aware of that. It's interesting to me that no one ever talks about maybe looking at that and opening that up. We have a situation where transportation is changing a lot. The statewide transportation improvement fund has been wildly successful. The STIF ODOT has, that just came in really into its own at the last 2017 bill. It's been very successful. It's oversubscribed. Everybody wants more transit now. Same thing with, with bike and walk kind of stuff, infrastructure, safe routes to school programs are heavily oversubscribed. But we have this constitutional requirement of the state highway fund. Given all your experience in Salem and around transportation, is that something, I mean, is that a non-starter? Is that something you think would be interesting to at least look into, changing that, that requirement?
You're not going to see me initiate it.
Yeah, I hear you. Well, even just spitballing.
I think it's a grassroots issue, you know, if there's enough support for that and people get something on the ballot, then more power to you. I hate to think that we're fighting over the crumbs, that we really need to enlarge the pie that's available for transportation across the board.
Yeah, I hear you on that. You've talked before about when, back in the heyday, when you were really bringing in a lot of money for transit projects, it was, it was just a different political era. And I love the way you framed it in the past, which is back then, say, early 2000s, when Portland was really leading on transit and I think there's parallels to biking as well. We were able to get the attention, not just to the federal government, but there were fewer people around us that were, there were fewer cities we were competing with.
Right.
And we essentially created a lot of competitors.
We created our competition.
That's such a, that's a helpful way for me to understand it. And then of course that competition is taking those dollars and it's harder for us to get. And I think that's led to some of the erosion of our, of our leadership. So I'm just curious, from your perspective, should we, I don't think we're going to get back to that. But like, what's the new normal going forward? Are we just locked in this new reality? Or should we do something locally where we could start to show leadership on transit and bike walk stuff again or what?
Well, I think we have plenty of plans and plenty of ideas and how to do that. The problem is the revenue, you know, because most cities across the country and states have sales taxes. Now, I'm not advocating a sales tax right now, but they have that source of revenue. And we had to patch together all kinds of pieces of money around the region to raise the match money to go get the federal money. So we've been at a disadvantage, but we maximize that, so to speak. You know, Seattle now has a sales tax dedicated to transit. They are going to outperform us. They already are. They're building light rail lines all over the metropolitan area. And we're kind of stuck, you know, without another revenue source. You know, when Trimest was created in 1969, I think it was, and they, the folks that were there at the beginning tried to figure out, well, what revenue source could you use for transit here without a sales tax? It became the payroll tax and that's been pretty tapped out. In fact, it's been expanded now to even tax employees contribute. But I think we've, may have gone as far as we can on that revenue source. So we need to think creatively. Otherwise, we're just again, back to patching it together. You know, 10 million from this city and 20 million from Clackamas County or however much, a little bit of TIF, the urban renewal dollars. It was a real struggle and we were very creative in doing it, but now I think we're kind of stuck.
I hear you. Well, hearing, hearing someone headed into government saying we're stuck and saying we need to be creative. I want to bring it back to downtown, down to your, to your district. Been a lot of talk about revitalizing downtown. But there hasn't been a lot of, I don't think a lot of creative solutions when we talk about just how to do that. It's been the same old, same old. We just had Mayor-elect Keith Wilson talking about everybody needs to come work downtown again. You know, that's something that is kind of always a go-to. We've had, we've talked about, you know, there's been policies for tax breaks for businesses, stuff like that. I'm just wondering if you have any different ideas for how we can make downtown vibrant? You know, obviously you have a transportation background. I'm just curious if you think there's something we can do to the public right of way that, that, that we should be focused on in getting people to come back downtown and making it more vibrant?
Well, I think there are lots of ideas. You're right. Not necessarily all original, but I think everyone agrees that we need more eyes on the downtown, that we need more people downtown to create that vitality, to create additional sense of safety downtown. And it's how we get people back downtown. Do you mandate that they come back to work? That may work to a degree. I don't know if that's the full answer. How do you activate the boarded up empty storefronts? Being downtown yesterday for the swearing in ceremony, I was walking, I don't know how many blocks, but I noticed that there were storefronts that had been empty that were now really interesting things, like used furniture or, or craft goods from different artists collective. That was fascinating to me that that is happening to some degree, but it's very slow. And I think you are beginning to see a very slow turnaround downtown. I don't know how many buildings can actually be transitioned into housing. It's very difficult with the more modern buildings, the way the windows are configured in the HVAC systems. But I do think that we, we have some opportunities there. We need to have more housing downtown. There's no question that will help activate the downtown as well. But we just need more people downtown. And it was and still is a center of employment. And you know, and if we don't turn around the downtown, I mean, we're already going to suffer. The city budget is going to suffer because the property tax values downtown have gone so low that our property tax collections, which are at least, I know, half or more of our general fund budget of the city, they've gone down. We have to turn the downtown around.
And we have plans too, that I think, you know, you've talked about how we have plans, but not the outcomes. And we tend to like, like, like making plans. We have been talking about creating more like car free space, pedestrian mall kind of stuff downtown for many years. And there's really haven't, we haven't really moved the needle a lot. The city has a network of plazas they put in during COVID, but even those have been eroded down a little bit as they start to try to transition to make it like a paid program. And they're, they're pulling up some of the outdoor dining. There was also a report from the city, pricing and equitable mobility report that talked about using cordoned zones and potentially even pricing to get downtown for, for drivers and stuff like that. What do you think about those ideas? Would you be willing to support, you know, pedestrian malls that are connecting some of those plazas? Do you think it's time for Portland to have more car free corridors downtown where people can come and shop? And we can have great public space without the danger threats from drivers?
You know, that's a part of the beauty of the events that we have around the city, the, the biking events around the city, getting people out to appreciate what it's like to be able to have free movement without the danger of cars. I think we can do more of that. I think connecting the plazas is a really interesting idea. My very best friend lives in Vienna. And if you go to Vienna, you know, there's that entire center of town is all car free with a streetcar that goes all the way around it. I think those are ideas that I'd be very interested in entertaining.
Speaking of transit going around something, what about bringing back Fearless Square?
At this point, you know, we can talk about it, but I'm not an advocate for that.
You think it's a, why not?
I just, I think that people don't value things that are free. That goes not just for fearless, but there's been some talk during the campaign about just fearless transit generally. We, I think that Trimest sent a great job at trying to make transit affordable to people who are low income. They have a low income fare. We have honored citizen fairs. We've done just about everything we can. And if you're going to make it free, then you're going to have to figure out which, which routes you want to cut.
In the absence of a lot more money, I guess, you would say.
Right. And I don't see that money, you know, coming, you know, manna from heaven any day soon.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of part of the reason I'm asking these questions because, you know, you say we're stuck and the answer is we need more money. And I think people are frankly tired of hearing that from elected officials is that if you just gave us more money, we would, we would do the X, Y, Z and move the needle on things. And especially when it comes to transportation, right of way issues, there are ways to change things in the right of way that don't necessarily require massive capital projects.
We've been experimenting with this, haven't we? And I think we can do some more experimentation and there isn't going to be any more money because we're coming into a very difficult budget situation. And I think the council, the incoming city council, as well as the mayor have been very shortchanged. I think that the way things have been set up with one staff person per city counselor and the current, the incoming mayor gets five people and the current mayor has something like 24. That's nuts with that, what, what has happened now. I'm just, I know this is riffing off what you asked me about, but the city council itself is going to be, the legislative branch, if you will, is going to be the weakest branch of government if we don't do something to support the council more. One, one staff person is not going to be enough, given that the amount of work and what we have to do. And, and I would say that the same thing for the mayor's office. The mayor does not have enough resources now to really fulfill the duty of that role. But we'll, we'll be discussing that in the future.
Yeah. So you bring that up to what, to illustrate the challenge of?
It's a challenge of governance and the way the system's been set up so far. It's a challenge of governance. And the way the system's been set up so far, I mean, I give the current, the acting city manager, Michael Jordan and his team, a lot of credit for implementing the transition with the charter change. But I feel that the decisions that were made by the past council have really short-changed the incoming council. And this new form of government, this legislative branch is, is, is really a weak branch without additional help. And that's going to be a tough conversation that we're going to have. That tension between the legislative branch and the executive branch, we're going to, we're going to see that. We're already feeling that tension. But anyway, I'll just let it go with that.
Yeah. Do you see like committees forming? And do you see some strong, you know, is there going to be a transportation caucus, let's say? Do you think that that's something that people can just, you know, is that definitely going to happen? Should we expect that?
I don't know. You know, we haven't, as a 12-member city council, we haven't actually had a conversation directly among the 12 of us about what committees we should have. We have various lists. We have ideas, but we haven't come together to decide what they will be. And there's already been talk about a variety of different kinds of caucuses among the 12.
Yeah. And I ask because I do think there's just a dearth of, I think, creative thinking when it comes to transportation in Portland. And I just wonder, you know, bringing it back to even just say, you know, your district downtown, I forgot to ask at the top, but I'm curious, do you have experience using different modes in those places?
Oh, sure.
Do you, if you walked and biked downtown or something like that?
Well, I, fortunately, because I live in John's Landing, I can easily access a bus or streetcar to get downtown. And I can walk. I don't bike. I want to come back though to something that you said about not being creative. I think we've been very creative as a city. I mean, we were a model, like you pointed out, in transit, in biking. We have lots of great plans that we've come up with. So I don't, don't short-change us. We, we have been creative, Jonathan.
That's a, that's a good point. I think, like, let's say we started Sunday parkways.
Yeah, exactly.
Great car-free event.
Exactly.
We started those in 2008 with five events. I think in 2024, we did four events. So to me, that's kind of where we're getting stuck, right? We, we are creative at the start. We do something cool, but we don't quite sort of bring it all the way home and establish it to its full potential, let's say.
Institutionalize it.
Institutionalize it. Like, you know, we have a transit mall downtown, but you can drive on it. That's not a transit mall. That's, that's just a street, right? So why, the transit mall should be car-free. That kind of thing. Or we should, you know, we have a plaza program, but they're just, you know.
It's disconnected, right.
Disconnected because we haven't been able to do pedestrian malls, you know. So yeah, Portland has these things that they, we've done, but this is getting to the next stage of really, of change. And I think, you know, obviously, a lot of the low-hanging fruit is taken. And I think there's a lot of just hope and sort of maybe expectation out there that this new council will be able to finally start to deliver on, on some of these things.
I wouldn't just leave it up to the council. I mean, it has to come from the community as well, from the grassroots organizations, your organization and others to come forward with those ideas as well. I mean, we, we have gone through some interesting generational change. I mean, we started out as, you know, trying to be the most European city in the United States. And we had a lot of work about, around urban livability, urban mobility. And now there's sort of a generational change going on that, that, that's maybe where that sense of stuckness comes from. We don't have, we haven't created that vision for what is, what is the next big thing, you know? And coming out of COVID and the pandemic, and then, you know, the, the demonstrations, which turned into riots and all the issues that we've had. And we're, we're still kind of coming out of that. And I think it's up to everybody to help work on that vision, not just the 12 people who were elected.
I agree. I agree. I also think that the fact that we have all those plans and the, the way that they haven't been realized, the process of doing that has burnt out a lot of people on the street. The grassroots are tired and, right? There's been a lot of turnover. Local activist groups, a lot of the nonprofits now are having financial trouble. So I can appreciate that things need to start, you know, on the streets, let's say, and the grassroots. But that's always an interesting interplay is when someone like you is saying, it's got to come from you first. But then the, you know, people in the street are saying, well, but, but we passed plans. We did things and they're not being implemented.
And they haven't been implemented. That's, that's something I'd heard a lot about on the doorstep is Portland's just not executing on what we've already promised. And there's so much frustration.
And we had a whole task force of people for the, for PBOT's pricing options and equitable mobility plan, you know, I think 12 months of task force meetings and all these wonderful recommendations on how to get more revenue out of transportation system users. And it's basically just sitting on a shelf because the politics, obviously, you start talking about pricing and everybody's heads explode. But why have that committee if we're not going to actually try to find a way to implement some of those things?
I hear you. And maybe that's partly, I don't know exactly what to attribute that to. You know, I'm going to say something really nasty. Maybe we just need a big enema, you know, we just, we're just, we're not, things aren't happening.
Well, we changed our form of government. I mean, that's about as big of a change.
Because of that. I think there was that frustration that things are just not being executed on. So let's try a, you know, what's really what most of the United States does is this, the new form of government, a city manager form of government, where you hold the agency people accountable for what the legislative branch is asking them to do and it, and have budgeted for it. I think we have a lot of habits to change. We have, we're going through a big culture change with 7,500 city employees who are used to answering to a politician that changed, you know, every so many months or every so many years. There's some whiplash that goes with that, but there's also the kind of the we be here and you be gone, you know, syndrome, which I experienced at state government as well. So this.
You mean like with the turnover of elected?
We don't have to do what you want or listen to what you want because you're going to be gone pretty soon. And you're, you're managing us and you'll be gone. Or, and I know, this is, I don't mean to discredit all the wonderful people who work for the city. And we have, you know, tremendous leadership inside the bureaus. But I think now there's going to be a greater level of accountability and hopefully execution.
Yeah. Kind of on that note, can you describe, I know you know how the city government used to work. You had a lot of interfacing with it with your past experiences. Can you maybe share with folks like a specific way you think that like the new council would be different? Let's just say like a neighborhood transportation issue. Let's say someone is worried that the people are speeding in front of their, their child's school or something like that. So, I mean, in the past, what, they would try to find, they would have to get on the commissioner's radar because the commissioner was in charge. Any sense now? You've been through the two-week training, right? I mean, I know you haven't, you're not sitting in, up there on the, on the dais yet, but how would it be different now? So if someone has a neighborhood concern about transportation in your district, they come to you and say, councillor Clark, you know, what, what's going to be, what's going to happen next?
Well, you're right. It's a huge change. And there are great expectations on the part of the public for responsiveness, for, you know, better constituent relations. And I think that's something, Jonathan, that we continue to work out. How we work with the 3-1-1 system, who in the office will be responsible for constituent relations? Will it be one person hired for all three? How will that work? Will we be able to talk directly to the bureau staff? You know, that's, that's under some restriction right now. We've gotten some pushback around that. So that whole issue of how you're going to take a, a problem that comes to you from a constituent and work that through the system is still being formulated. I'm not sure how that's going to work. We, we, we're, we're talking about that and what is the best route for that. But I don't think you can expect the newly-elected people to always stay in their lane, you know, when it comes to constituent issues. And there are various levels of knowledge on the incoming city council. There are people, obviously, people who've already served, who have lots of connections in the bureaus. But the majority of this, the new councillors don't have those kinds of connections. So that's something we have to work out, how we're going to be most responsive, how we're going to make something happen. And the big issue will be the budget and how we appropriate dollars to deal with some of the issues in our distinct four districts.
So anything you can say to like a concerned group of Portlanders that wants, that really cares about a specific issue? Any advice for how they might approach your office?
Well, stay tuned. Watch how this evolves. Watch which committees get established. I mean, I'm, I'm virtually certain there'll be a transportation committee, but it may be a part of an infrastructure committee, for example, grouping together, kind of the way the service areas have been grouped. I don't think that we will mirror the service areas, but pay attention to what committees get set up, who the leadership is, how you get in front of that committee, how you express yourself, what's the best route. I think that, that will become apparent in the next couple of months.
Yeah. I'm curious, your, your personal mood looking forward, I think it's safe to say, there's been a tremendous amount of just skepticism, cynicism, pessimism over in Portland in the last four years. But I'm, I'm feeling and sort of sensing that with the, the election, a lot of that is subsided, regardless of what's going on at the federal level. But I think locally, my sense is there is a shift. And I'm just curious if you're feeling that or what, what you're feeling as you embark on this new chapter.
Thank you. That's a great question. I feel that the 12 people who got elected are all very sensitive to this, that we need to show the public that we can work together, that we can get results, that we will be arms-linked vis-à-vis the federal government and whatever comes at us, that we will be united, that we will have a better relationship with the county, with metro, with the state, that we will all, hopefully all be pulling in the same direction, you know, with some differences. But I'm optimistic about the desire of the 12 people who got elected to work well together and for results for the people of Portland.
Okay. I appreciate that. Well, is there anything else that you wanted to share or talk about? You have any questions for me? Like what?
Well, I'm, I'm curious about how the bicycle community is feeling. I know that our ridership is way, way down since COVID. I mean, I remember the days standing on Hawthorne and watching people stream into downtown. I mean, it was a bicycle freeway with people handing out donuts and almost celebrating ridership. And I know we're way down. And, you know, despite the fact that we have, I think, you know, relatively good bicycle infrastructure, the ridership is still down. And, and that worries me. And I don't know if it, you know, exactly what the roadblocks are. I mean, I know we're, you know, aging. And if that's, I mean, I took the clips off my bikes and I do have two bicycles, I admit. But I finally am at a point where I, I don't want to clip in anymore. But, you know, is that the population change? Why aren't people riding as much as they do? And I know that Roger Geller had recommended a marketing campaign.
Yeah. How did that strike you as a response to getting more people to ride?
I, I don't know. Maybe the jury's out on marketing. I think that people need to see cyclists and, and know that it's safe and, well, relatively safe. And they need to see more cyclists so they feel more comfortable.
Any idea how to make that happen?
I, I really don't know. I'd like to know why more people aren't riding.
Well, I think it's sort of this chicken and egg thing.
It is kind of, isn't it?
And I know there's also this reflex, again, I've, I've been a marketing person almost most of my life professionally before I did this. So I'm aware that there's this tendency to think that marketing's not valuable. It's just a thing. It's like an extra expense and it's some special thing. But it's so funny that people can, I think, feel that way while also understanding that we're super impressionable as Americans and companies spend trillions of dollars marketing to us. So it must do something, right? And so it's chicken and egg. You said, you kind of didn't, you weren't excited about marketing, but then you also wanted more people to be riding on the street.
To be visible.
To be visible. And it's kind of like, I chalk up our lack of good marketing as one of the reasons why fewer people are on the street.
You're the marketing professional. You may be right. I don't know.
We stopped talking about it, you know, in, in a way that was strong and confident. And that just kind of seeped into all the fabric there. And people are like, I don't know, it's not really such a great thing. I may not do it. Or, you know, it's sort of lost some of that excitement that it had back in those days when you'd see everybody. Cause I agree. That's a big deal.
It was very exciting to see all those cyclists.
And there's a lot of political capital in that visual impact.
Exactly.
I mean, you would have, you know, policymakers, elected officials, agency staff seeing platoons of bike riders all over Portland during rush hour.
While we wrestle with that issue of how to get more people on bicycles, I have to say, and I don't know if I answered this questionnaire from you or who it was, but given the condition of our streets right now, I think a priority is, is restoring our streets, filling the potholes. They're dangerous for cyclists. They're dangerous for pedestrians. They're not good for cars either. But if, if we don't do something to restore our streets, they're going to deteriorate to such a point that they'll be much more expensive to, to rebuild. And we don't have the resources. We've got to fill the potholes first. I'm sorry, all my friends who ride bicycles. But to me, that's a priority right now.
And do you think we have to choose that or making the streets work better for bicycle riders? Is there a way to do both? I mean, how does that work?
We've got fiscal constraints. We don't have enough money. I mean, PBOT is suffering. And they're, they're just, there aren't the resources in PBOT right now. And, you know, maybe something miraculous will happen at the state level and we'll suddenly have more resources to, to dedicate to bicycles as well as maintaining our roads. But road maintenance right now has got to be the number one issue.
Yeah, I hear you. But I mean, it also comes back to the fact that, you know, we're, road maintenance and the deterioration of roads is caused by the behavior of transportation use that is the most expensive to continue to subsidize. And it kind of gets back to the issue before about being more creative and being maybe more bold or actually fulfilling our plans. Cause if we've fulfilled those plans of, say, pricing transportation, like we talked about.
Or road shrinkage.
Or, yeah, or, you know, getting more people on bikes, which we have a plan for, which we haven't followed, right? If we were actually fulfilling those, the urgency to fix the roads would be lessened. We, they would last longer, right? We wouldn't have as many potholes because that's the reason a lot of this stuff is happening is because the, so many people are driving.
Well, you're talking into the future. I mean, right now, as we speak, in 2024, our roads are in bad shape.
Right.
We've got to fix that now before we have to resurface them or dig down deeper, which will be even more expensive.
Right.
So you're, you're, you're right on the one hand, but what you're talking about the long term and how we shift the behavior and, and maybe, I mean, I know trucks are an issue. I know that when Sam Adams was overseeing PBOT, he was very concerned about what the buses do to the streets as well.
Yeah, they're very heavy. Yeah.
They're very heavy. And he, he demanded that Trimest actually put in additional resources into the, the bus paths to, to try to stop some of that deterioration. And they did.
Yeah.
They responded and recognizing that. But I mean, you make a good point, but I have to say that right now, if, if we don't do something, some kind of prevention, it's going to be even more expensive in the long run.
Right. But I guess like, that's part of the, that should be part of the conversation is what does that prevention look like? There are people that I could, I could call up right now that would say, again, it's, it's a vote for maybe making some places where people can't drive cars. And then that deterioration is, it just ceases.
And we've been doing some of that. I mean, look at what happened. We've already made some of that happen. I mean, Front Street or the NATO Parkway.
Oh, you mean NATO Parkway.
I mean, there, there are examples of that.
Right. But I think.
In my old neighborhood in Hillsdale, you know, there's now just the bus lane and the one car lane going through.
Right. But maybe even something even different than that, even more creative. Like, I'm sure you're, you're aware of Northwest Marshall Street down in the Pearl District. It's an old cobbled street by like Sisters Coffee, right there. So like between, you know, 9th and 13th, 9th and 12th on, on Marshall, one off of Lovejoy.
Okay.
Cobblestone Street, right? So I think there was some historical preservation gone on there. But it's still, the cobblestone street is still there, but years ago, the city paved and smoothed out the bike lane. So the bike lane is smooth and the rest is cobbled.
Oh.
So that got me thinking like, you know, this conversation that we have about, we have these roads that have crazy potholes and it's going to cost hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars to repair them. Creative solutions. Can we use, you know, modal filters more so that people can't drive on certain roads? And then maybe just smooth out a small portion, a wide enough portion that would be a bikeway. Something more creative.
I'm not trying to exclude those options. I'm just saying that we have to fill some potholes now before the streets completely deteriorate. I'm open to all those ideas, Jonathan. Don't, don't get me wrong. But I'm just saying that we have an emergency right now.
Well, I think the magic is in finding something we can actually do. Because what my concern is that the conversation gets shut down when we talk about the maintenance thing because someone just drops the, well, it's $4 trillion to get to that backlog. And everybody's eyes just glaze over.
Well, and maybe it's not a one-size-fits-all. I mean, maybe not every pothole. Maybe there are solutions like Marshall or other things that we can do on a smaller scale.
Yeah.
And maybe we're very strategic about which potholes we fill.
Yeah. I mean, on a similar note, do you think that the city should be a little more aggressive in, you know, the way it approaches like driving? Do you think we have too many cars using Portland roads and that there should be stronger policy signals that say, drive less?
Well, we have sent some of those signals, haven't we? And raising the parking, the cost of parking downtown, that seems to continue to be going up with new special fees. So there is that. There may be other strategies. I, I don't know about the, you know, the New York strategy, you know.
Charging people to come over the bridge?
Charging people to come in. I don't think that would work here yet. I think that's a little premature to be talking about that. But I think the right sizing of streets, slower speeds. You know, we used to think at Trimest that people weren't going to come back onto transit until the price of gas was up above the $5 a gallon level. was up above the $5 a gallon level, that it was going to take that as a disincentive to drive. Um, so maybe all those things will add up, but, um, we haven't broken the car culture yet. You know, we're still, uh, car culture. That's, it's changing slowly, but there, I think you're right. There are little things that we can do here and there and parking is, the cost of parking is definitely one of those.
And that price of gas is just constantly tagged to like a car use and bike use.
Oh, oh, bikes too.
I know someone who, they would always look at the bike use chart and it's the ups or downs is always related to price of gas. So when we, when gas price spikes, bike use goes up.
Interesting.
Hey, guess what? As a city, city leader, city official, we have the ability to charge more for gas locally and we've done it. People have passed it, I think, three times now.
That's right.
But the city, and this is related to what I said before, a great idea, local gas tax. Hey, that was great. Charge 10 extra cents a gallon. Guess what? They've never increased that, even though it's been a strong majority vote every time. Again, I think it's a timidity. I think there is a lack of strength when it comes from city hall and city council and the Portland building of saying, we know something that works. We know that people like it, but we don't want to upset the apple cart too much and we're kind of satisfied with how far we've gone. I, I know it just, that's my pitch to say, I think that's where we are. And it's kind of like, make it 30 cents, make it 20 cents. We raise a lot more money. People pass it by well over 60% every time. And then show what you can do with that, right?
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't exactly know what the holdup was with the last council, but now you have 12 new people that you can talk to about that.
I'm looking forward to that. Okay. Uh, one final question I'm going to throw out here. Public restrooms. All right. And I, because this is kind of a pet issue, uh, we, we just had a conversation about it on Bike Portland. We had a comment of the week and someone was talking about how they, there are people who won't go downtown because they can't, you know, have a reliable place to use the restroom. Uh, we talked about revitalizing downtown, you know, as someone who's spent a lot of miles on a bicycle, going through different communities, just desperately looking for a place to use a restroom, like this is an issue. Uh, and I heard you mention it a year ago, so this shouldn't be out of, out of the blue, but I think you mentioned it in the context of saying the first order business is that Portland needs to do these basic things better. We've got to make sure streets look better. We've got to pick, pick up leaves or whatever it is. We've got to do these basic government functions to restore some of that trust. And I loved it when you were, when you were talking about that, you threw in, we got to have clean, safe, accessible public restroom. So Olivia Clark, what is your plan for being able to go downtown and know that you can find a restroom to use?
Well, I am flattered that you were listening to me earlier and, and flattered that you picked up on what I was saying about getting back to basics because having more Portland loos is pretty basic. For the people who are shopping downtown, for the people who are just passing through downtown, uh, for the poor people who are homeless downtown. We need to have more Portland loos. And I know they're expensive, um, but, um,
Okay. Where do we find the money? Your experience at finding money? You can't say we're stuck and we don't have, okay. Are we going to, uh, is it going to be a delivery transaction tax? Uh, that's popular right now. Goods. I don't know. Is it going to be some sort of, uh, is it, maybe we can work with the Portland Metro Chamber to say some of their membership dues go into a Portland Lou fund? What's, what's an idea that we can get to get, you know, 10 Portland loos in the first year or something?
I think, I can't remember if they're $800,000.
Are they that much?
They're very expensive.
If they're six figures, then I need to adjust my expectations.
In fact, I believe, now don't quote me on this, but I think that we, the city developed and maybe patented the form, uh, the design of the Portland Lou.
Another frustrating thing is we invented these things.
We invent, well, I mean, European cities and Iceland and others have.
I think it was Commissioner, former Commissioner Randy Leonard who
Yes, it was Randy Leonard.
Made it the actual Portland Lou.
He was, he was overseeing the water bureau at that point.
Right.
And he came up with the Portland Lou idea. And I think that we're actually maybe even getting some revenue off of that design when people use it and, uh, around the country or in other countries. Um, so I would, I would look to the water bureau again.
Okay.
I know that unfortunately, I hate to say this, but, uh, given the way things are going, the water rates will continue to go up. Maybe we build something in there and make sure that we get more Portland loos through the water bureau. But, um, I, I don't, I don't know what else is possible at this point, but I'm, I'm an advocate for Portland loos. You're right.
Good. That, that's my pitch. And it's, it's definitely got to be like a bipartisan. I mean, no one's going to vote against some more public restrooms thing. I mean, it's not going to happen. So, and you know, if, if you end up being council president, I'm going to expect, get that on the agenda.
The Lou plank.
The Lou plank. Exactly. Exactly. As my first order of business. No.
Terrific.
And thank you so much for coming in.
Oh, I appreciate the time. It's been fun.
Great. And I hope to see you back. Maybe I have to give you my pitch to come to Bike Happy Hour, one of these Wednesdays. It's really fun. We gather over on North Williams Avenue and it'd be fun to see you there sometime.
Thank you. I appreciate the invitation.